All on table.
Are you?
Close.
Are you?
All right, we're hearing from the folks for the vote. You guys got something to say? Yeah.
I got something to say. It's about your on, about how you guys have your meetings on Zoom and for whatever you guys YouTube is maybe quite the worst one I've seen.
Which one?
Whatever you guys do for your out distance. It's YouTube, I believe, right? I tried to get on and watch the last meeting and you can't hear nothing. I mean today's aid with COVID monies, I'm sure the city's got an upgrade somewhere they can afford and if you can, they'll afford to reach out to other avenues that might help you because it's not good to watch online because you can't hear nothing. If you're sitting right here, it's great. But if you're sitting over there and you can't hear nothing.
If there's an issue with that, anybody's always welcome to come here and get a part of coffee at any time if they want to. Yeah, I'm sure we can get you one. You know, we'll try to work on that. Getting it better than any place. Anything else, anybody? All right, moving on to ordinance seven fifty-four.
Those will be heard in the reflections.
And reports. Administrator.
So I provided a written report, just a couple of quick updates. The first and main one is that the Budget Committee passed the budget out of committee. So first reading of the budget ordinance will come to the council May fourth. So thanks, thanks a lot to the Budget Committee for great and speedy work. So we're good to go. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Moving on, Treasurer.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I submitted a report and I did have to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Treasurer? Nine, four. Moving on, Speaker.
I put in all the senior tax exemptions and I've been fielding a lot of calls from the public complaining about the amount of the prices, how they've gone up. And I've had to explain that the city's not responsible for that. That it's contracted out, so I've been basically taxing them on student terms. And it counts for some prices.
They are able to appeal that, do you wish?
Yes, yeah.
And there'll be a discussion, there'll be a discussion in May kind of affiliated with the budget discussion. Our budget's in good shape this year. And so one of the things that I told the Budget Committee was that I'm likely to propose for the first time in like four decades that we change the mill rate for a year and drop that a little bit, so. We don't, we don't have any control over the property values, but we do have, the council does have control over what, what the, the level of taxation is.
If you bring that to the council explaining how it all works.
Yeah.
Drop that half a mill or a mill, what the result would be.
Yeah. And that's my plan to bring that back to the council in May. And I forgot to ask Keesha to put it on her report, but I'll be out of town until about May third. So we're trying to get, we put a bunch of stuff on the council agenda tonight and then we're already loading up the May fourth agenda, but don't plan on a meeting May twenty, or April twentieth.
Good. That would be a good way to resolve this because property values are gone, eat, gone crazy because you got so many outsiders buying land here. And there's been a price that locals could put you out of the market.
Based, based on our budget, I think we can comfortably cut a quarter of a mill or half a mill. And really not see a significant decrease in revenues.
As long as you don't see a decrease in services, that's fine. That would be my concern. And like I said, we got people that are living here for four months for this cost, which is just like people doing because that's difficult.
Yep.
Yeah, moving on. Speaker. He's back. But he ain't here.
It's empty. Oh, you're looking at that, no.
All right, I've submitted a written report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. If they got questions. Come on, come on, David.
Looking good.
Okay. Fire DMS Coordinator. Hi.
Submitted a written report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, goodbye.
Um, I do. The new position that you, that will support your admin needs and the DMV needs. So they'll be able to work at the DMV as well as your admin. Is that what, that's what we're calling it?
If we get the right person, schedule and try and make it massive. That's about the best we can do. Tried it a little bit before, takes that cluster. So we're gonna try to get it to you.
I'm pretty confident that the new position, if the council approves it in the budget. So far the, I've had a couple of talks with the two departments and everybody's on the same page, so if you find the right employee, I think it'll work well.
And they'll just split their pay between the two departments? Do they have their salary?
Yeah, actually, one department has offered to pay a higher portion of the salary and use them probably a smaller portion or equal portion of the time, so.
We still want to give it control, you know? All right. More questions, sir? Okay, thanks, David. Urbemaster.
Hans is asking an excuse tonight. Oh, Hans is on the phone. There we go, excellent.
Mr. Mayor, I've submitted a written report. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Hans? Yeah, thanks, Hans. I give.
I do want, I do want to point out from the harbor, thanks to Hans and Fred Inson. There's four more completed fingers ready to go into harbor.
Rebuilt.
Rebuilt, rebuilt fingers, yeah.
A lot more stable than the old ones. Fred did a good job, wanted to see him there.
Yeah.
Library.
I submitted a written report and happy to answer any questions.
Where you going?
We've had, we've had this conversation. The library was that thing.
It was all about timing. Something got missed out. Dad doesn't do it because when he says there, it's there. You've only got five minutes. They just time to just.
Oh, you know, oh, that, I was home, my parents were gone, my dad had medical in Seattle and my son, my youngest one got sick. So I don't leave him alone. So Michelle had to do
everything.
it by herself and then she has a son in with that storm going through. She had to take him to school, so she put the sign out and just so happens.
They didn't read the sign.
They didn't read the sign and she'd be right back. And so she dropped him off and, and went back to work and then we got the call.
Why that was fun. I just don't miss out. You get a little.
Yeah.
All right, any questions, Library? Hmm? Mr. Police Chief.
I've submitted a report. Be happy to answer any questions.
You've been busy, Mike.
Look at that.
Are we making any end way on this meeting with the DA and the prosecuting attorneys and the judges and I've already talked to a person in the town of Christians saying, did I talk to you yet? I thought I did, but we're trying to get all these people together because they're not in Port, oh, sorry. No. I thought I did, but I've been talking to several. You just got that.
We haven't, Mr. Mayor, but that's on me. I haven't gotten the letter done yet.
We haven't been able to reach out to everybody, there's other things going on, but we're trying to get a meeting together to get them to enforce laws that are on the book and to quit letting these guys walk after they bust them on the pound and go or walking around yourself on the next day.
She sent me a good list of contacts. I just haven't finished the letter, gotten it off yet.
It's getting out.
Well, I've reached out to everybody to let them know that to expect either a phone call or a letter from the council or the administrator pertaining to this.
You're all the item here and have a meeting with them at BoJack.
Right, in a perfect world, I would fully support that, but I think if we get too, we're gonna be extremely lucky.
Yeah, I know. They're gonna save the video.
Well, and then I got news, it was on Monday, the new ADA that was supposed to start this month and pushed back two months. So instead of three, if the DA's office is still going running, two. And that complicates things too, because the busier we are, the busier they are and then there's so many court rules and everything else. If you don't do things at a certain time, then people walk and so it definitely puts an extra load on them.
What are they that extra load on? Because what happened is they walk.
Yeah.
Their police chief done is really pushing on everybody. It's pretty tough right now.
Um, I have a question. It says that the code enforcement officer got bumped to police officer recruit. So he's obviously working towards being a police officer. Are you gonna fill? Are you gonna try and find another code enforcement officer or are you just, you just had that position?
That was a special position, but there, there's been a few things that have come to light, but I'll get with the mayor and administrator next week about a few things, but that position was created specifically just in essence, trained the individual until a certain timeframe where I could by ATSC regulations go from a CEO to a police officer recruit.
Okay, and then I saw that you made several drug arrests and a good job, but I was wondering why it says that it probably won't go federally yet. I thought usually with, if it was Gus and Gregory, that usually federally.
Yeah, I thought I put it in the staff report earlier this year. I spoke to the council about it, but President Biden basically sent out a memo to all federal prosecutors changing the matrix to where the case can go from state court to federal court, basically making it almost impossible. So the federal prosecutors can't not, even if we have the three nexus of your felon, get built, get guns, use to be a shooter. That's not enough now.
Oh, wow.
No.
They changed the role.
It keeps Biden's son out of jail, but that's the personal.
That's why I have to be, all the people.
Yeah.
Assuming that we need to have it. And express our concern that there's people walking around that shouldn't be.
I will put a reminder for myself to get that letter out.
In fact, all it is, our community, there are things people steal and pay their apps and it's just a bad, bad deal. They're around and they're not helping us. Yeah. Thanks, everybody. Public Works Director.
That's Russell.
That's Russell. Uh, Russell wasn't feeling well this evening, so he's excused. Be happy to try and answer any questions. I will note, while we're talking about the Public Works Director behind his back. I'd like to put a luncheon together for Wednesday or Thursday for Russell. He's leaving before I get back from my vacation, so I'm trying to put something together before we leave, so I'll send out an invitation to council members as well.
Have you had any interest in this position?
Uh, we just started advertising and we haven't gone beyond the local advertisement, so Keesha and I were talking about that today. We're, we're gonna uh, you know, we're gonna cast a fairly broad net, so we're gonna send notice to Anchorage, Chino, Ketchikan, probably Seattle Papers advertising the professional, with professional organizations. And maybe use like Indeed or some other recruiting website, but all we've done so far is posted locally on our website and stuff, so we'll be working on getting that word out. Not yet.
All right, Recreation.
I've submitted a written report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Taylor Governor.
Yes. It's so awesome, yeah. She's a very hard person.
Yes.
Yeah, we've been pretty supportive, we just think we deserve them.
No, totally. They're born to spend, like that Easter carnival this weekend, too.
Good. All right. Moving on, Parks and Recs. Russell.
I have an excuse. I have not submitted a written report of the pump, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Come back and be home. Ready to get back and get back and help the city create and move forward as much as we can.
All right, thank you, David. Moving on, Reading and Reporters, Bob.
Uh, the only thing I might just point out is just there's some information in there, an email from Mark Pentecost at the Forest Service and some information attached to it. The Resource Advisory Council is required to spend secure rural schools, what they call Title II money. And there has not been enough interest in the RAC in recent years for them to have a full enough committee to, to do that. It's kind of an onerous process to get appointed to the committee. It has to go through the I think through the, the Secretary of Commerce or some such a level, but if any council members are interested in participating in that, the goal of that RAC is to take this Forest Service money that's set aside for special projects in the, in the national forest and pick projects to allocate it to. And so I've got more information if you're interested, but if it's something that sounds like it might be interesting to you, I encourage I encourage you to follow up with that email and get ahold of Mark Pentecost or or this Hillary Woods, I think, is the program manager for the RAC membership.
Hey, Brian.
Yes.
Yeah, just for, you know, just for record, I, I have been a part of that process since it was initiated a few years ago. I am signing up right now. You know, as part of the newly developed RAC, I, I would have to go through approval, but I have submitted my application again.
Good.
Aren't they gonna have a full crew, Mike? Do you know?
No, they're, that's the problem is they, they have not been able to find enough people to sign up. You know, to get a full contingent to, to hold a forum, so they're, they're doing outreach on that.
And it's a good program. The island has benefited greatly from it over the years. Uh, we used some RAC money when we improved the dam several years ago. And the RAC money has been used for various recreation and road maintenance projects on Prince of Wales Island. And there's literally money sitting there waiting to be spent. But without a full committee, they're not legally allowed to convene and designate that money for projects.
Do we know how many seats there's shot of the whole committee at this point?
I don't. Do you know, Mike?
I do not know that either. I don't know.
I can reach out to Mark Pentecost and get some information.
Call a few people, see if they'd be interested in, in involved.
Hope you, be happy to follow that up.
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering what's going to become of that? Because now we're tied in with other communities and it doesn't sound like anyone from Ketchikan or Rango have even shown any interest.
Yeah.
Well, we have the same problem with the forest associations that Rango and Ketchikan don't even have a member and they have both open seats and they, nobody will step up.
And there is still some question about how that, so for those of you that don't know, the RAC used to, there used to be more RACs. And Prince of Wales essentially had its own RAC. Uh, more recently, they've, partly because of the staffing issue for RAC members, the Forest Service has combined a number of RACs. And so we now fall into a RAC that kind of covers all of southern, southeast Alaska. And there's still some question as to how the RAC is going to allocate money between communities. I think there's some formula that they can use if they choose to. But again, that's a discussion that they can't even have until there's a RAC to have the discussion. So, yeah, Millie's question is a very legitimate one and we don't know either how that will work and probably won't until a RAC forms and makes a an internal decision about how they're going to apportion those dollars out to the different, the various areas that used to have their own RACs.
So many meetings and how long are they usually? Is, Mike, you know how many meetings and how long it takes, how much time's involved for somebody to volunteer?
It's usually, you know, when we were doing it on a yearly basis, it would be, you know, at least two meetings and sometimes three or four. You have to propose projects with a, you know, an estimated funding requirement. It has to meet certain Forest Service criteria. And you can't propose a project and vote on it in the same meeting, if I remember correctly. I believe that you have to propose it, it has to go on the record. And that is discussed and voted at least a following meeting. So it's, it's more than likely to be, you know, three meetings a year, but they're they want to do it, you know, electronically, so it's not like we would have travel significantly or anything.
How long will the meeting be to last?
Oh, maybe a couple hours and, you know, I would imagine with the new format, they could be, you know, they could be time consuming, but you know, I, I would suggest the same thing Brian did. We are, the island community as a whole and Craig and as well as other communities, we, we benefited greatly from the funding that flowed through that project. And it's, you know, it's really worth our time to to commit and to do that, to do it. There are just a number of projects on the island that were funded through that program and it's been so many years now, I think it's like five years since it's any money has been allocated out of that. My understanding is that it's a significant amount of money just for the Prince of Wales Island communities that's available.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see if we can draw up some interest from somebody here, this people involved hopefully.
And this, also, this might be something to put up the Paucat because this is, this is actually an island-wide committee, so it could, you know, it could be people from anywhere in the island.
We, we've done that, Mike. I've already sent the Mark Pentecost email out and we had Mark at the last Paucat meeting. There weren't many members attended, but uh, he shared a little bit and then I sent out the RAC membership information to all Paucat members.
Okay, well, it's, it's a working effort.
Yeah. No doubt, hopefully we can get some interest. And being on this committee with something there. Start talking to people. Moving on, Consideration of Resolutions, ordinance. Ordinance seven fifty-four, authorizing city administrator to negotiate the lease of city-owned property with Ken Quigley.
Passed and approved, ordinance seven fifty-four, began lease negotiations.
Which has been made second to pass, ordinance. Any discussion?
So roll call, vote, or vote.
Hannah Bassner?
Yes.
Little spin over, yes. Michael Campnich?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yeah.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Thank you, council. As always, when we complete negotiations, the the lease will be brought back to the council for its side.
Ordinance seven fifty-five, authorizing city administrator to negotiate terms of sale of city-owned property with Ken Quigley.
Pass the second reading of ordinance seven fifty-five, authorizing negotiation of the sale of city-owned property with Ken.
Which has been made second to pass the second reading of authorizing the administrator to negotiate terms of sale of city-owned property with Ken Quigley. Any discussion on this?
I don't know, for the record, Ken's here, if you have any questions directly for him.
You know, I, I do have a question on this. I know you know, in the past, we, we've had a lot of interest in people purchasing lots out there. We have declined to sell lots out there. Whether we approve this or not, we, I should say, if we do approve the sale, it will more than likely create interest in other, other lots. Um, you know, people who would like to purchase the other lot, who would create stronger interest in that. Something we can think about. I know in the past we have chosen not to let.
That's true, Mike, and it's like I stated before, when that other issue came up was that if a business is there and they're creating jobs for the community and the tax revenue from either sale of fish or sales tax or whatever it is, if they generate something and they keep, keep the site clean and free of hazards and materials, then I have no problem with it. Being sold if it can be a, a sustainable, ongoing business. That's the industrial part. It's meant to have businesses that are thriving and operating and providing jobs. And our land is limited in Craig. We are just about out of land completely. And we can't afford to, to just let stuff sit there idle. It's gotta be producing something or there's no point for somebody just sitting on it. It's gotta be doing something. There's other interests in those leases and that land that want to put in businesses and that create jobs and income for, for the community. And that's very important, especially due to us being limited on land available. So that's my prime concern is that it actually it just don't wise uses of what we have, the resource. Not just waste that resource. So that's my concern.
Is that property zoned commercially or is it just, is it, um, commercial out there?
What is the zoning now, Thursday?
Um, hello?
It's commercial.
I think it's light industrial or industrial. It's going to be one of the two. I'd have to check.
It's white industrial, green, I believe. Because we have a boat yard out there, Sean. He's got a successful boat yard there. And it leads toward the green industry.
Right.
It's not a parking lot.
No, and I'm, I'm, I don't remember the exact zone, but it is a commercial or industrial.
Yeah.
So.
It's not a place to store equipment that's not in use. It needs to be doing something for the community, not just sitting there idle. This is all we have.
And I believe Mr. Quigley's application is consistent, the use is consistent with what he's doing now, which is allowing the terms.
He has a proven track record of producing income, providing jobs and sustainable.
That right, Ken?
Yeah, sustainable business, so there's a big difference in these, in the two proposals to sell land out there or offers or whatever it is, but there's a huge difference. That is why, Mike, I feel that way, so.
Okay, I, I would have one. I know this is a negotiation and it'd be easier if I was everybody, I would, I would have one suggestion to consider during negotiation and that would be that the city of Craig retains the right refusal, uh, purchase, purchase the property back if it changes hands or goes out of a big business.
That's a good point.
And if council approves the ordinance tonight, I'll include that in my negotiations with Mr. Quigley.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mike.
Very valid. And I hadn't thought of it, but that's, that's good. So I would definitely want something like that in that. Somebody that stays productive.
We can work on that language.
What do you think, though? You're good for that? All right, we'll move on then.
Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, guys. Roll call vote.
Hannah Bassner?
Yes.
Millie Scoonover?
Yes.
Michael Campnich?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Okay. Some things business, moving on to that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't need any formal action on this next item about the joint Craig City Council and CTA workshop regarding cannery property development. The council did ask at the last meeting to set up a meeting and it wasn't completely clear as to kind of what the council members saw as an agenda for that meeting. And I'm hoping actually, Clinton's here tonight, maybe you can fill in the blank in terms of when. I know that.
May 5th.
Is that, is that?
No.
What year is it?
No, I was on time, I knew you were going to be gone. It's just
I'll be back.
Like when email sent you, you know, it's harvest here right now, you know, the weather's been bad, council's been traveling. I have COVID. It's been a bad 10 days, but we'll work on a timeline.
Okay.
And an agenda. I'd like to work with the mayor and the administrator, who has a formal four or five items.
And I'd like to make sure to add anything to council. We'd like to add to that agenda, so. I'm just kind of asking for some general direction at this from the council about what you all would like to see on the agenda for the meeting.
Send your questions.
If you want to email them to me, that's fine.
See, you can't even.
I, I don't need an answer tonight, but just looking for some more guidance. Oh, go ahead, Julie.
Uh, this is Julie. I was one of the ones that were requested to have the meeting. It did seem that there was, um, some lack of communication and since there were requests to have a discussion, I just thought it'd be good to sit down and have some conversation. So I don't know that I necessarily had particular agenda items in mind. I just thought it would be good to to have a sit-down conversation. Um, it seems like the entire month of April was not good. Um, um, some of the correspondence, but yeah, I just was, uh, it seemed like there was, uh, a desire to have more conversations, so I wanted to, since that request was made, I wanted to just try and do that.
Okay. Like I said, please feel free to email me if you have some items that you think of that you would like discussed at the meeting. And we'd be happy to do that and work with Clinton for putting our agenda together.
One that I'm thinking off the top of my head, I know that if we don't um, proceed to go lobby to overturn the.
I don't think that's likely.
Right, but if we don't, um, I know that we were talking about that we would lose that funding and I know that the CTA can't get funding that, um, the city isn't, can't, so maybe they have something that they can help us with to still develop their property or have a dock there and stuff. So it's not just still sitting idly not being used, because I know that the CTA expressed interest in wanting to have a long house or some type of something there and stuff, so it'd be nice to kind of collaborate on if we don't, if they would be able to help us in something like that. Or if they even had something like that, but yeah.
Okay. Email? A minute, we'll move on.
Vanessa, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just making sure.
Okay, I'm there, okay, I'm there. I have a daycare donation request.
So, Mr. Mayor, this, uh, this request has been kicked a couple of meetings asking for more, for more information, so really, we're back to Vanessa's original request letter. I don't see a date on it, Vanessa. I think you sent the letter in sometime prior to the March 16th meeting. March 2nd meeting, actually, I think. And so.
Is that true?
As the memo lays out, uh, there's a donation request, Vanessa Richter and Island Daycare. We're, we're finishing up the, the lease documents for, but the council's approved them to lease the daycare center to open up for a new daycare. So Vanessa's letter, it boils down to asking for donations and/or loan for some of the startup costs. I'll let the council take over the discussion and Vanessa's available for questions.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
This, Mr. Mayor, this is something that is very much needed in Craig. And I did go through the plan, but in the plan, I could not find a budget. And if you're going to run a business, you must have a budget. I mean, I don't just want to, I mean, we've been donating to that daycare for.
Years.
Yes. And I need to see figures of some sort that there's, there are figures in here. So I have a hard time making a decision on whether to do a donation.
Good point.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask briefly?
Yeah, go ahead, Vanessa.
Well, first of all, I'd like to, you guys save your time, but I would like to make a big note that we are not the old daycare. We are completely different 501C's. And we are associated with the old daycare that you guys had been using, so I do not speak or know about what you guys donated or contributed to or how money was spent or done with. We do have a tentative budget, but excuse the fact that we haven't opened our doors yet. The numbers are just, we, we can't guarantee that those numbers are going to be high or low. There is a budget, tentative budget, in that, that, um, business plan. It's, it's, it's kind of in the middle and I don't have it in front of me right now, I'm trying to solve those. But I'm always willing to give you those numbers, but I, I feel that we're being judged on what you guys did for the old daycare and I don't think that's going to spare absolutely all, because we're not the old daycare and I have no idea what they did or how they treated or what your guys' conditions was. So just, just to point that out, I was involved in that tonight and I don't know what you guys did for them and I'm sure you guys did a lot for them, but I, I don't want to be put in that same bucket because we're not that single if that makes sense.
Yeah.
As Vanessa, and we understand that, the group is totally separate entity. Uh, what it is, is that a budget gives us an idea of what you need to make and what your plans are and how it's going to move forward. And it would also give us an idea of what we feel that we can contribute to help you get started. By being able to judge what's needed in your budget, uh, estimate it or whatever you want to call it. If we have a better understanding of that, then we would be able to determine what we need to do.
And there's an outline of some of those needs in the original letter that Vanessa sent.
There's some of the stuff in there, yeah.
And I will add, in terms of, you know, just kind of differences between our relationship with the old daycare center and the, and this new nonprofit that Vanessa and her partner have formed. Uh, there are some differences. The council had some concerns a while back about, um, uh, our access to the prior board. And, um, you know, we've been working with Vanessa and Vanessa is very happy and, and in fact, in the corporate bylaws will include a seat for a city of Craig designated representative on the board full-time. And so there will be a, a lot more opportunity for somebody to report back regularly to the council on on operations at the daycare and how funds are being used and and a, a lot more involvement, so. I, I think that would be helpful as well.
If you could come up with some kind of guesstimated, um, budget, Vanessa, that would help something in writing that says, you know, ring's going to be this and teachers are going to make this and just a kind of a ballpark figure of what you're looking at. It gives us a a little sort of picture of what's going on and we'll be able to help more and see how stable things going to be. Can you do that?
Um, I can. I, I'm pretty sure it's in that plan unless you guys thought, uh, I'm looking, hold on. Unless you guys thought the plan that it was in, but I know it was in, um, one of the plans that we did.
Yeah.
But we didn't, so we found a plan, we said, yeah.
I'm flipping through it, Vanessa, and I can't find, uh, a budget in the
Let me look.
document that we have.
And my authority, you guys, the law, and what, and that would be my bad. I have so much, I have, I have a few other ones we were working on, so let me see if I can just read it out for you. But if somebody had any questions other than that, that I can answer.
Um, yeah, I do. Do you have, um, people are interested in employment, have you? I know that that was a big, um, it's been difficult for people to find employees. And I know that can affect how many children you can accept.
Um, we are actually already have a certified, um, bed elementary teacher, um, that would be yours, Julie. Um, we already have a designated, sorry, admin. Some person that is helping us with paperwork. And then at this point, we have had three people um, bring up that we need to kind of hire another worker. Um, that is the intention in applying. Um, we've already had a couple of people who that I'm aware of, um, asked about a job for the, um, the, 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 so we do have people that are willing to do it. And like I said, we're, we're, we're islandized, so we're looking at everybody, um, but it pays the need. And I think that it will open some doors and, you know, bring people in to work. Because we want to make our funding, um, reasonable and they are pay reasonable for people to be able to work. So we're not going to lull anybody. We're hoping to be able to pay our people, um, um, higher than the minimum wage they could work at large.
And if I can make a suggestion to the council, there's a, a list of specific more startup costs than general budget costs. And there's no requirement that the council be finished with this discussion tonight, so. If the council is inclined to make some loan or donation to help with some of the startup costs, I know that it's Vanessa's intent to have the daycare center uh, operational by, um, July or August unless that schedule has slipped. And so some of the startup costs might be helpful. The council can certainly come back and have a longer discussion once you've been able to see the budget as far as what kind of other support that the city can provide.
Any more questions, David?
This is Julie. I have a talk to that's okay.
Okay, go ahead, Julie.
It's kind of hard to tell and I need to, I don't need to be clear. Um, anyways, I mean, I, I appreciate the opportunity, but it's awkward. Uh, anyways, um, uh, Vanessa, thank you for being patient with us, with drawing out our response to you and I appreciate what you have to say about the daycare. We do have a bit of, of daycare burnout that might be connected on to you, so if what your comments are valid about, you know, your new entity. Um, uh, and I did, uh, look through what you have here and it's obvious you put a lot of, of time and, and thought into setting this up and I appreciate what you're trying to do. Um, I think getting up those numbers would be great. Obviously, they're projected and not maybe real if you haven't done it. Um, but just as a general comment to the council, um, we've kind of always known that in order to get the daycare restarted, there's, you know, to get it restarted, there's going to be, they're going to need financial help to get it restarted. Uh, you know, for now, we can all have our opinions on whether the city, um, should be involved in doing that or not, but there's, to get, to get the daycare restarted, there, there are going to be money to get it off the ground. Um, you know, one idea, you know, we could do something where we give money and then maybe on a local basis or however you want to do it, but to get it off the ground, they're going to need money to do that. So those are my comments.
Yeah, Vanessa, I just got your copy of that budget. I forwarded it on to Brian and, uh, one of these days, if you can come in, we'll set up time to sit down and, and talk about that stuff and go over it again. Uh, you and me and Brian can and then, uh, we can get something that we can present to the council so that the council can look at it like we do our budgets. It'll kind of help us understand more of what you're up against and what's going on. So, and we can help you move forward that way, hopefully. Because we have to have daycare. It's critical, everybody. We have employees all throughout town that are losing days because nobody can watch their kids and on and on it goes. It's not good. We have to have something that's sustainable and up and running, so. The city's willing to help, if we're not willing to carry it forever, that's the only thing.
Mr. Mayor, that was never our intention, um, and, and I am finally sitting down with you guys and I just really want you to know that in the letter that we, um, submitted to you guys, one of the things that we do say is that we would be more than willing to pay back 50% of like the payroll amount that you would, you know, donate. We don't want the city to feel like we are taking advantage of them for the rest of the year. I've got so many letters I've responded donations from, anything and everywhere I can think of. The councils, the tribes, the businesses. We're not sitting here just relying on the city. We are definitely trying to get up and running and as soon as we get our feet on the table, we plan on applying for everything, Craig, that comes available that we want to have some access. So just to let you know, we don't expect the city to tear it up, in any way, shape or form, and that's never will be our, our, our motto. We're going to help the city and help the people and help the children of the island. And at this point, like Julie thinks we're going out, it's just getting up and going because there's nothing left, if that makes sense. There's, it's starting fresh and flying, everything is, it's starting from ground zero. And the surprises of everything that we are dealing with now is more than we expected as we did. And we, we do not want the children or the parents involved in this to lack any educational planning um, for their children at all. So that's why we're coming up now and doing it, but I have no confidence in that, and I appreciate your time.
That'd be great, because this is a statewide problem. I mean, every meeting that I've gone to uh, with the legislature or representatives up there, every one of them is, I, this is their, one of their top priorities is how to take care of this daycare issue and it's a federal issue as well. So I'm sure there's help out there and they're putting it together ways to, to get it and to provide it. And if we all just keep looking, hopefully we can start finding more and more of these funds that are available to help get that going, sustain you guys and, and where you're not relying on all these donations, you have to have some actual help. So, uh, we're more than willing to help you look for that stuff and get you going. I'm very glad you're doing what you're doing. So we'll work with you and try to get this put together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel, for having me tonight on this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, if the council doesn't want to take any action tonight, we'll, um, we'll meet with Vanessa and get the, I just saw the budget that you, you know, made, so.
Yeah.
We'll get that out to the council and and put it out for you at another meeting, Vanessa.
I will be there at every meeting from this going on, doing tours.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. Capital software update.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so this is a follow-up from a discussion that we had a couple of council meetings ago. We told the council that, uh, we got a price from Casell, uh, which is, uh, been looking around the software program that that the finance department wants to go with. It is a substantial cost increase over AccuFund and as with all accounting systems, it's a long and torturous uh, changeover process. But, um, uh, the, the budget committee so far has, uh, been agreeable to putting it in the budget, of course, provided still the full council approval of the budget. The council at the discussion on March 16th seemed to be in favor of the option to start. Um, the council at the discussion on March sixteenth, uh, seemed to be in favor of the option to start the transition now. Using some general fund reserves and then hopefully having the system live, uh, towards the end of fiscal year twenty-four. So that we can bring it fully on system, uh, online and stop using AccuFund beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. So we've, we've talked to the, uh, uh, we have, um, continued the conversation with the, with the vendor. And, uh, what it would mean, uh, in order to do that would be, uh, to commit, uh, thirty thousand dollars this fiscal year. Which we would draw out of general fund reserves and then we would put the other half of the transition fee and some of the go-live fees into next year's budget. Um, I think we budgeted about forty thousand dollars for that next year. And then this would put us in a position to be able to fully switch over the software by the end of fiscal year twenty-four.
I've got a couple of city managers, uh, you know, parks and rent workers, everybody is struggling with this AccuFund system. It's just been a nightmare. Hannah's aware of it and she's had to deal with it. And I don't even wanna look at it. It's beyond my scope.
I, I think this is the right move, council. It's, it's definitely a, an expensive move and it'll be a, a rough transition. Yeah. It's gonna help us with, uh, training. It's a much simpler software for, um, employees to use. And that's been a one, not a, a huge issue, but it has been an issue in employee retention. Is folks trying to get trained and using the software. We keep kind of dealing with little issues because of quirks in the software. We're still having odd issues that we don't understand why the software is doing. It's time to move. And, and this software seems to be a good transition and it's my preference to get started as soon as we can. So I'm asking the council to, uh, excuse me, make a motion to, uh, appropriate up thirty thousand dollars in general fund reserves. Uh, from fiscal year twenty-three funds and to authorize me to execute the documents to start the transition process.
Those are the second.
Motion's been made, executive to, uh, and probably go get these guys to get this process started. Just thirty thousand dollars. Anyone stretch them out? No, you just roll call them.
Um, uh, roll call vote since money's involved.
Julie or Mike, you got anything to say?
I, it's very good.
Cool. All right. Roll call, say?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And the Basnet?
Yes.
Billy Schoonover?
Yes.
Michael Campnich?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Moving on to the water system issues, um, we're considering a credit for the March water bill. Due to, because the city had put everybody out a little bit, uh, when our water system collapsed on the server a bit. Um, so we're considering making adjustments to everybody's bill. Brian had planned a more eco-like.
So Kimber and I have talked about the best way to do it. We could go to each bill and apply some percentage. But that's gonna be a huge, uh, labor process. There's no good automated way to do that. Uh, so our recommendation is to, um, apply a flat thirty dollar credit to each water bill that we bill out on a regular monthly basis. Uh, the only exception to the thirty dollars would be the two larger trailer parks. Uh, their water bills are consistently higher, so we would essentially credit them what they paid the month before for water. And the total cost to the city is gonna be about twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, um, with all of those credits. But I think it's a good move to make. Our revenues are generally up for the fiscal year. So we can absorb the, we can absorb this reduction in the water revenue by crediting, crediting these back. And hopefully we don't have to think about it for at least another twenty years.
How many gallons do you think it takes for somebody to flush out their hot water tank?
Well, I mean, a, a hot water tank is only forty or fifty gallons.
So that's all it should take just?
Yeah, I mean, obviously there's probably a few hundred gallons in a, in a household system. And depending on circumstances, people may still be getting turbid water coming in, which would mean they have to flush more. Uh, Public Works crews are working on, uh, flushing hydrants and trying to get turbidity out of the line as much as they can. So it's a.
Pretty clear, you know, one of the major users in town decided they were gonna flush their system at the rate of five hundred fifty gallons a minute. That's more than we produce.
Which pretty much scoured every bit of sediment that was left in the system.
And stirred up everything that we had just calmed down.
And that was, so I think it was last Monday, that there was some water discoloration.
I haven't ever seen.
Somebody came from Long Island.
It, it's hard to say, to be honest, and it really depends because some people haven't had any turbid water. And so they didn't have to flush anything. Other people, for where they're at in the line, they're still getting turbid water coming into their system. And so it's taking more to flush it out. Uh, the thirty dollar credit is, um, uh, we estimated it based on a normal usage of between two and three thousand gallons for a household. And it basically credits each household for one base rate and, uh, two to three thousand gallons of usage.
Yes. That's one way we can say sorry what happened and, and, and we're, we got it back online as quick as possible. Like you said, when we had another issue arise.
Are all the houses metered in France?
Not a hundred percent. I think the majority is, but a few aren't. Yeah, we still have just a small handful of un-metered services.
It's very small number.
Yeah.
I was wondering if people's bill was affected that much. I mean, thirty dollar credit is nice, but the twenty-two thousand that it's costing the city to credit people, just seems like a lot.
Substantial.
It is.
After we just had to pay all of that out there.
Uh, yes.
Well, hopefully we got some money coming to help with that issue. So.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, you're right Chanel. It's definitely a substantial amount, but.
Right.
Given the lack of usable water for a fair portion of March, I.
Yeah, I just didn't know for the twenty-two thousand that is costing the city, if the thirty dollars that people are gonna receive, would they even be, um, heavy about it or, you know?
I, I, I would choose not to speak to the public's capacity for happiness when dealing with their water bills, but, uh.
Sure, some of them will be. Some of them don't.
You go to the store and buy some of that candy bars and Jodas.
I get that.
Very good.
Yeah.
I, I get that, that individually it's not a great big credit. As a whole, it's a big punch to the city's revenue. But like I said, I think it's a reasonable accommodation to make.
The city can see the K without, uh, going in high and without the water we got donated and, you know. It's just part of doing business. I mean, it's what you say. It's just one way to, you know. Maybe help, you know, one of the thirty we can reduce is the four or something. That's up to you.
Yeah.
The council.
Really, hold me up.
I won't film you if I was. Good, we had something.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't read this before, but I was just gonna make a comment because the council, uh, you know, sewer costs is more than water. Every time you do have a meter, you're charged by what comes out of your tap. And just, uh, and Brian's memo wouldn't affect our sewer, but in reality, if you're running your tap to clear your water, you're getting charged that much sewer as well.
Yeah, that's why.
Just for thought, I mean, I'm with Hannah, I've never had any groundwater issues of, probably, but I have reached out, had, you know, ten or twelve former propane customers who, because they're on demand, all our years no longer worked because of sediment. But they're easy fixes, but.
They back up?
Uh, no, there's a, there's a filter right on the other way.
There is, yeah. I got one shot.
I'm open to some direction from the council to increase the credit if you want.
It's just.
Don't listen to that Chanel.
Even if we were talking about water and sewer, that's still a couple thousand gallons that you're crediting, right?
Yeah, sewer's charged at a higher rate, so we probably would be looking right about to.
We were talking about two thousand gallons of water and two thousand gallons of sewer. What are, what are we at? Like four or something for water?
Well, it's not just the, the, the consumption rate, but that includes the base rate as well. And the thirty dollar credit also includes the base rate plus three thousand gallons of consumption. But yeah, it's about, I think the water is at about, um, sorry if I'm gonna get these numbers wrong. I think it's about five ninety a thousand and sewer is, um. I, I, I wanna say, yeah, that it's ten or twelve, uh, dollars a thousand. Uh, my point in the memo, um, was not necessarily the, the amount of water being used through the sewer. But to recognize the fact that use of toilets and stuff was, was primarily not affected. And so folks still had access to their sewer for a month. And I was looking at the credit more as a recognition of no access to drinking water for some period of time between the boil water notice itself. And then the time period trying to clear out the turbidity.
I feel like it's a fair amount. I'm saying I don't wanna give thirty dollars to everybody. I'm just saying it's a big amount for the city to eat after we just had to.
If, if it helps, um, our revenues, uh, generally are very strong this year. So, um, I think that we can, we're, we're in a, we're in the best position we're going to be in to absorb that cost without affecting, the bottom line or future services.
I mean, we were told from clients and communications with EDC with us throughout this entire process. And, and they just admitted this on how well it was handled, uh, by our crew and everybody concerned. And they've had nothing but, but good to say about how it was taken care of and dealt with. And we know that our guys tried to test it good and fixed it quickly as they could. But, you know, at the same time, these people were out of water for two, three days drinking water. They could still use their toilets, most of them. Kathy Levy, they put salt water in her. We didn't wipe through rear side. We were in a necessary system. So.
And people were.
Carry a bucket up from the beach. She weren't willing to do it.
And, and people were affected differently throughout town. So trying to figure out individual effects is nearly impossible. We had some people that never lost any water pressure. So they were able to use their toilets and everything else. And, and a lot of those same people, uh, did not have any turbidity, right? Uh, the, the whole time, and I lived at a fairly high elevation in town, I had never lost water pressure. I always had clear water and, you know, so it's hard to tell. I know that there, and I know that there are households that have a different story.
Right.
But it's really hard to, so, um, you know, it's, it, right now, from our perspective, a blanket credit recognizing the loss of use of drinking water for some period of time is, is a fair and appropriate gesture to make.
Does the council feel like a fair, appropriate gesture?
Just a lot of money from Chanel.
It is a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, want to get a vote?
Uh, yes, sir. A mo- a motion and a vote would be great.
How about a vote?
Make a motion to our staff to apply that it's all city great water services as discussed above.
Motion's been made, executive credit, um, city great water counts.
Roll call vote since we're talking about finances, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
And the Basnet?
Yes.
Billy Schoonover?
Yes.
Michael Campnich?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yeah.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
You did that though, that would be more.
Thank you, council.
Probably be having to give thirty dollars to everybody that came to the bar last year.
That's right.
No. Okay, here you go.
There you go.
Thank you, council. I'll get, uh, Kimber and her staff working on this, uh, over the next week or two.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, just wanna call to the council's attention. Uh, so the next business item, I don't know what discussion the council wants to get into. Uh, of course, normally everything, all decisions are required to be made in open meetings. There are a couple of exceptions to the Open Meetings Act. Uh, one of those would be, um, to discuss anything that might prejudice a person's character. Um, if the council's happy with an open discussion, there's no need for an executive session. If the council wants to talk any issues that, that, um, that might fit under one of those exemptions for the Open Meetings Act. Then the council has the option to adjourn to an executive session and have a closed-door discussion and then come back. The decision itself would have to be made in an open session. But I just wanna call out that I, I put an executive session on the agenda just in case the council wanted to exercise that option, but it is not required.
Council understand that?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, council, uh, we had three, uh, three nominations or three folks submit applications of interest. Uh, two of them verbally, um, withdrew their, uh, interest. It was after the, the application period had closed. So I kinda treated it, we treated it like, um, regular elections and declarations of candidacy. And so I've included all three names in the memo, but Fred Hamilton Jr. and Trampus Knastner have both, um, withdrawn their names from consideration.
And so, um, this is Julie. Can I talk?
Yeah, go ahead Julie, sorry.
All right. So I, and I apologize again with me being away, um, unexpectedly. I have screwed, screwed a little bit. But I have somebody that is interested and I did not realize about the deadline. I thought we had until the meeting to give names and, um, so if somebody is interested, it's now too late for me to submit their name.
I'll leave that to the council, but yeah, we have, um, we said, we did set a deadline for applications, which was, um, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of March. Um, if the council chooses not to appoint anyone tonight, uh, we will open another application period and reconsider, um, applicants at the March, at May fourth meeting. Uh, the council, uh, can also choose to extend the application period if you want.
Okay. Yeah, I, I feel bad. I, I kinda messed up there. I mean, I should've spent more time with me being gone and everything. I just kinda, um, messed up. So yeah, there, there is a candidate and I had informed them that we would be discussing it at the meeting and we didn't submit names at that time. So. Um, but I do have a person that is a long time engaged for us and is, and is interested.
Okay. Council, I would suggest that we do extend this period to try to get, uh, whatever, people to find to get their applications in, if they're interested. I think this happens really fast. A few people realize what's going on. So, in my opinion, I think it'd be a good idea to extend it and try to get a couple more apps. So.
Let me look at my calendar real quick. Here's my calendar. Oh, there it is.
Uh, this is Michael. I look, I am comfortable with, um, extending the, uh, application deadline.
So my suggestion, if council's inclined to extend the deadline, would be to extend the deadline to April twenty-sixth. And, uh, that would give Keisha enough time to put all of the letters of interest and the list of names into the council package for the May fourth meeting.
Okay.
Did they, um?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fun. I wonder where they backed up.
Um, what would be helpful, the, uh, uh, by code. What would be helpful, the, by code and statute, the council is supposed to make some attempt to fill the seat within thirty days and this will, the May fourth will be after the thirty days. So if the council could actually make a motion to table until May fourth and vote on it, that would be helpful from our perspective of making sure that we're in line with what our requirements are.
I made a motion that we extend it to the fourth?
May, uh, April twenty-sixth. Yeah, extend the application in April twenty-sixth.
For the April.
For the May fourth meeting.
Motion's been made, executive to extend the application period as described by Brian. So this is a roll call or?
Voice vote is fine.
Voice vote, all in favor?
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
I couldn't hear very well, what's the new deadline?
April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth.
They need to submit a letter.
Yeah, and they'll need, they need to submit a letter of interest.
I'm sending it right now, so I don't screw the pooch.
Okay. Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, I'd like to see a little more interest in this and, you know, long-time residents that know what's going on or have at least a little general knowledge of it. I appreciate the applications that have come in, so. I feel it's an important issue and a important seat and it should be considered the best that we can do. If we do it right, they waste it.
No more comments?
Right, and it's only till, they serve till October and then they're.
Correct. So the way our, the way our statute, our ordinance is written is that council vacancy caused by, in this case, resignation. The council appoints a person to fill in that seat until the next regular election, which is in October. And then at that regular election, there will be a, I think it's one year, but I have to look to be sure, there will be a one-year seat that will be up for election along with the regular, this, this year, we've got two, three-year seats and the mayor's seat up for election, so we would just add a one-year council seat.
So Brian, we're not gonna vote on this on our April twentieth meeting?
I have it.
Yeah, I, I won't be here April twentieth.
Oh!
Uh, so I had already told the council earlier that, that we've worked to either move stuff onto this agenda or put it on the May fourth agenda and didn't plan to hold a meeting April twentieth. Sorry, that wasn't clear, Julie.
Hey, any more council comments? You wanna go home, Millie?
Move Julie to adjourn, yes, I'd like.
Oh, I have a council comment.
Well, you better hurry. Millie's running down the door.
It's quick.
All right, go ahead.
I just wanna reiterate, I know it's come up before, but I just wanted to reiterate the housing issue and trying to, I know the city's not going to build housing and I don't want to get into that or have the city build housing, but just, I wanted to kinda, I don't know, somehow keep it on our radar of ways that we can encourage or promote or facilitate that housing thing. I just keep hearing from so many business owners and from school and from, you know, it just keeps popping up, you know, everybody wants employees or this and that, if their family's moving here, oh, really hard. So just places the city can help foster and encourage housing. So I just wanted to reiterate that and throw that out there, and that's all I had.
If it helps, Julie, I did, um, I did send out a, an email to Sean C today asking about some developments that they've kind of got in their back pocket and seeing what it might take and where the city might provide some assistance to move this forward.
Hopefully, plenty of right, I think, all. And trying.
Yeah, I mean, the, the solution is gonna require a bigger conversation than just with Sean C, but they do have some developments that they've been thinking about or working on over the years that might be a good first step if we can figure out especially how the city might promote the development a little faster.
Right now, the school is short-staffed and one of the reasons why is they can't find housing. They have teachers packed, ready to move here, and they can't find a house to live in.
And that's across the board.
And too many teachers, that's why they're over budget.
There's other contributing factors that I don't.
There's any reason to continue.
Yeah.
That's just the question.
Oh, God.
Thank you for the comment, Julie.
All right, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. So Millie wants to adjourn, is everybody agreeable with that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
And we're sure.
He's so tired. He's worn this week.
That one, I think that's lucky.